Well, thank you everyone for joining us for our first town hall of 2022. So for the last few years, KNA has been conducting these town halls in the fall. And we invite, we do them in five different regions of the state and invite the candidates in those areas and all of our members and any, any other guests who wants to join to, to a Zoom, a virtual town hall meeting so that we can share the priorities of nurses in the state of Kentucky and we can hear from the candidates. So welcome everyone, we're so glad to, to have you with us tonight. We have several hosts that are co-hosts that are with us tonight. You'll see Delinor Manson, our executive director, or one of our administrator folks, Kim Becker, and Brittany Welch, who is the head of our government affairs cabinet. We are also co-sponsored in this event by our affiliate organizations. We have, gosh, is it 19 or 20?
We have 20.
20 affiliate organizations who are, some are specialty nursing organizations, or some are organizations that are not nursing focused, that are healthcare in general focused. So those folks have all been invited and are helping us to put this on tonight. Just a little bit about KNA. KNA was established in 1906 as the organization to establish the nursing profession's scope of practice and standardize nursing education for nurses. By statute, the KNA represents and speaks for 89,000 voting Kentucky nurses who make up 53% of the healthcare workforce in Kentucky. The Kentucky Nurses Association is comprised of KNA, the Kentucky Nurses Foundation, or KNF, and CANAC, the Kentucky Nursing Action Coalition. KNA focuses on the profession as a whole. Kentucky Nurses Foundation, KNF focuses on education, research, and scholarship. And CANAC focuses on work, the workforce, including sustainability to meet the healthcare needs. KNA is responsible for promoting and protecting the professional image of nursing. While the history of the Kentucky nursing profession stands on the shoulders of KNA, there are so many activities that the KNA supports on an ongoing basis. For one, legislation that supports nursing, nurses, and access to healthcare. KNA appoints nurses to the nursing technical advisory committee, which is part of the Medicaid Advisory Group in Kentucky. KNA provides recommendations to the governor for appointment for six seats on the Kentucky Board of Nursing. The KNA convenes and collaborates with a bold group of health-related organizational affiliates that I referred to earlier that address healthcare and nursing issues. KNA also provides CE education for nurses that can be used for licensure requirements as well as for professional development. KNA has input and impact on nursing school curriculum development. We have an active PAC or Political Action Committee. KNA participates in workforce analysis and development. And we are committed to social justice and the impact of justice, equity, diversity, and inclusion on healthcare outcomes as outlined in our mission, vision, and values, or JEDI as we're referring to it these days. Just recently, the KNA participated with health departments throughout Kentucky to deliver 140,000 COVID vaccines, over 12,000 COVID tests, and over 100 community listening sessions, as well as responding to the tornado disaster in western Kentucky at the end of last year. We also have responded to the flood disaster in eastern Kentucky. This list is certainly not exhaustive of who we are and what we are about, but it is rather brief. But I would like to focus now on our legislative opportunities and introduce Dr. Brittany Welch, who will review the 2022 KNA legislative priorities.
I would like to also extend my welcome to everyone who is attending today and kind of go over the agenda and a few of the rules of the road. First of all, you will have an opportunity to introduce yourself. You have about a minute and a half. And the reason that that's important that we say that early is that I have a hook here. And I am the time keeper and I am not shy with my hook. So we want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to be heard because we want to hear from you and we are so delighted that you're here. So about a minute and a half for the introductions. Before, after those introductions, there will be questions by our moderators, Dr. Brittany Welch and Julie Denton, our lobbyist. And then at the end, we'll talk a little bit more about the KNA. The questions that are going to be asked, well, you will have an opportunity to, everyone will have an opportunity to answer the questions. But again, in order to give everyone a chance to participate, we are going to ask you to keep your, your answers to be succinct. So do we have any questions about that timekeeping thing? And I will give you a warning at about 15 seconds. It goes like this. Okay? All right. Sounds great. All right. Dr. Welch, would you like to begin and talk a little bit about our legislative priorities that we had in 2022?
Absolutely. And thank you, Delinor, and thank you everyone for joining us tonight. And so I think it's important to kind of set a foundation and we have to know where we come from in order to understand where we're going. KNA members can be found in every legislative district throughout the state. Every year, the Kentucky Nurses Association works to establish legislative priorities that represent the interests of our key stakeholders, nurses, and communities we serve. Our membership is comprised of leaders in emergency oncology and critical care nursing, nursing education, business administration, primary care, school nursing, community health, and many, many more. In the previous legislative sessions, we've supported placing a school nurse in every school all day, every day. And just as nurses believe in evidence-based practice, we also believe in research-based policy implementation. We believe the research that suggests placing a school nurse in every school will decrease misutilization of the emergency department and improve pediatric chronic disease management. We also believe that schools with school nurses have higher standardized testing scores and lower dropout and truancy rates. We believe this because strong research suggests it. Although any of these factors on their own would be an excellent reason for KNA and legislators to support school nurses, we also believe the research that suggests that for every $1 spent on school nursing, it yields an overall cost savings of $2.20. So to kind of step back and put that into perspective, it's as if we were buying something amazing for $1, handing the cashier that $1 bill and then receiving a $1.20 and change and still being able to keep that something amazing. That's why we supported school nursing in 2022. Now, in the previous legislative session, the Kentucky Nurses Association also supported increasing patient access to care through restructuring the CAFAS requirement for those who are qualified. And to put this into perspective of why this is so important to nurses in the communities we serve, if I was to show you a map of the state of Kentucky and color all the areas of the state black that were designated as mental health provider shortage areas, the entire state of Kentucky would be black because they're mental health provider shortage areas. If I would do the same thing with primary care provider shortage areas, all, about 84% of the state would be black. So for the Kentucky Nurses Association, restructuring of the CAFAS is not really a title or a licensure issue, it's an access issue. It's a patient outcome issue. Data supports the safe utilization of NPs to fill the gap in our healthcare system. NP outcome data is not only, is not only at least equivalent in the primary care setting, research also suggests it's less costly. Kentuckians need access to improve health, health outcomes and restructuring of the CAFAS can assist with improving the access to care. We've also established that access to care, to appropriate care is a priority for nurses throughout Kentucky. It has also been discussed that we believe research-based policy solutions in order to increase this access. Sexual assault nurse examiners provide essential care to victims during the most vulnerable time in their lives. Research also suggests that when a victim has access to sexual assault nurse examiners, they were not only improved patient outcomes, but significantly improved prosecution rates as well. Improved mental health outcomes translates into long-term cost savings. Increasing access to same nurses through incentive programs to ensure hospitals are able to provide same nurses training programs can assist in providing Kentuckians with the access they so desperately need. In 2022, the KNA, through arguably one of the most trying times in US and Kentucky history, also supported COVID mitigation efforts. We supported masking, vaccination, workforce support measures. Although potentially controversial, we supported these measures because again, data and research indicated it was simply the right thing to do. KNA supported these efforts not only through legislative support, but also through boots on the ground volunteer efforts. We assisted with over 10,000 COVID tests and thousands of COVID-19 vaccinations. Deciding to assist our frontline workers and patients and needs was not a choice, rather it's what KNA stands for. It's why nurses are known as the most trusted profession in the world. Through the most difficult times in Kentucky history, nurses have rose to the occasion and have served our communities and our hospitals and our homes. But nursing is at a point of critical crisis. Although there are about 89,000 nurses in the state of Kentucky, we have an estimated shortfall of 36%. Could you imagine walking into a hospital and only two-thirds of it being available and staffed? Consider the implications of that. Consider the patients that will not obtain the necessary care. Think of how that impacts patient outcomes and healthcare costs. The Kentucky Nurses support initiatives to correct the nursing crisis. We support initiatives such as faculty retention and recruitment incentives, expanded loan forgiveness opportunities, a nurse merits program, retention programs, and creative solutions in order to attract and retain nurses to the profession because Kentucky deserves nurses. Although these were the 2022 priorities, every year, KNA considers, researches, and deliberates on upcoming priorities. As KNA represents Kentucky nurses, we take this very seriously and we love to hear from all stakeholders throughout Kentucky regarding issues that are important to them. Any nurse, any stakeholder, any legislator throughout Kentucky can request KNA support for a specific bill or topic by navigating to KNA's website, simply clicking on the advocacy banner and requesting support.
Thank you, Brittany. That was wonderful. That gives a nice round picture of KNA and our priorities. Julie, would you introduce yourself?
Sure. I'm Julie Denton. I'm brand new as of August to representing the nurses in Frankfurt. So I know just enough to be dangerous, although I did work with them for 20 years when I was in the Senate. And I spent 16 of those years as chairman of the Health and Welfare Committee. So I know a little bit about their issues, but I may not know all the details for them quite yet, although I am a quick learner. So I'm thrilled to be here tonight and this is their first town hall. There'll be several around the state by their regions. And so I'm so thrilled that each of you could be here this evening because I think it'll be a great opportunity for us to hear from you and you to hear from us because that's what's key to Frankfurt is that we partner and work on these issues together for the people of Kentucky. So first, what I'd like to do is I'll go in the order in which you are on the screen just because that's easiest for me. And if you'll take a minute and a half, and as Delinor said, she will hook you if you go past your time. She'll cut you off. She's curious about that. But Amanda, let's start with you. You get a minute and a half just for an opening statement.
Sure. My name is Amanda de May's Bledsoe and I'm running for state senate in District 12, which is Woodford, Boyle, Mercer, and part of Fayette. I'm currently out of town, so if I am in kind of the hills. So if I lose you on this evening, I just want to preface that my internet's not completely stellar. For the last eight years, I've served on Lexington City Council and the last four, I've served as chair of the Budget Finance and Economy Development Chair for the county. And one of the things we've worked on quite a bit is healthcare. It's one of the big counties' top five issues and top five really things that we do and what makes this city work. So healthcare is something I care a lot about and nurses are a critical part of making that successful. And I'll stop there so I don't go over my time.
Amanda's a quick learner, a rule keeper. Okay, next is Gary Stratton.
Good evening. First, thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. Again, I'm Gary Stratton, running for the 57th district here in the city of Frankfurt and Franklin, or most of Franklin County, running here. I'm a chair of the School of Business here at the Kentucky State University and teach finance, economics, and entrepreneurship. My goal is, again, I'm not a first-time politician. I've been in the background a lot for many, many years, a full-time educator and a part-time businessperson, several businesses on the side. I love helping other people be successful as I try to be myself and teach financial literacy in the high schools as well. And my goal is to just, again, I love healthcare. Obviously, I want to be healthy. I'm very proactive. I do a lot of preventive care for myself and people I'm around. So again, healthcare is a key to, to what I like to do. And of course, Kentucky State has incredible nursing program here. And I want to see that supported and grow. You know, KSU is in a rebuilding mode now and I want to be a part of that, as given I teach here as well. So that's, there's many reasons I'm running, but for, you know, I want to see Frankfurt, Franklin County, and Commonwealth of Kentucky be much more entrepreneurial, innovative, and same with KSU. And again, I'm a big supporter of any kind of healthcare that we can do to help people be more preventative and I'm here for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Gary. We appreciate that. Chad all.
Thank you, Julie. Appreciate you. Dr. Welch, Delinor, Donna, thank you for the invitation. And let me say thank you to you and your membership for what you have done, not only in this past year, these past couple of years with COVID and what you have done really for the health of the citizens of the Commonwealth of Kentucky throughout your entire professional career. I am running for the state legislature and the state house in the 79th district. It is currently mostly Susan Westrom's seat. Susan Westrom is retiring. The seat also picked up a couple of precincts from mostly Kelly Flood's area. It includes, that district includes most of the University of Kentucky, including UK Healthcare and Baptist Healthcare. So a very large medical and healthcare footprint in the 79th district. I'm the Democratic nominee. There's not a Republican nominee in this race, so that's kind of the status of my race. A little bit about me, I grew up in western Kentucky, moved to Lexington about 16 years ago. And for the last eight years, I've worked in the information healthcare IT sector. So I worked on Connect, if you're familiar with Connect or remember Connect. I worked in Steve Beshear's, Governor Steve Beshear's administration, staying up the Connect program. And I now work at UK Healthcare, leading their ER implementation of the Electronic Medical Health Record Implementation of Epic. So I've got some healthcare and IT background and I'm excited to be on, on the stage here with you tonight to talk about the issues that are important to you and your membership. Thank you for the invitation.
Thanks, Chad. And Delinor will tell you that I get things backwards sometimes in these names backwards because I see one name.
Too short.
It's too short, too short. But I did know a guy named Chad Og years ago, and so I'm having a hard time trying to keep all versus Og. Teresa Barton, are you at a wedding still?
No. I am, I am back, I'm here. I've got one more event tonight that I don't think, I'm not sure I'm gonna make it, but anyway, I'm gonna get on my time. I'm Teresa Barton. I'm running for senate in the 20th. That includes Franklin, Owen, Gallatin, Carroll, nine precincts in Boone, and four in Kenton. Yes, it's a crazy district. About me, I am retired state and local government employee. I was a county judge executive for two terms back in the late 90s into the 2000s. I worked in the Fletcher administration. I am a Democrat, but I worked in the Fletcher administration in drug control policy, which many of the priorities that I've looked at for KNA and your associations fall hand in hand and right in line with that. I feel like there's a lot of commonalities, although I'm a layperson, I'm certainly not a professional nurse. My great-grandmother was a midwife. I've served on the Board of Health for several years here in Franklin County as judge executive, near and dear to my heart. I was a teen parent, so therefore, public health, anything to do with that is important to me. I've served, I'm in my ninth year, serving on the Franklin County Regional Medical Centers' Board of Trustees. So while I'm not a medical professional and I do not claim to be, I respect what you do. I, what Chad said is, is exactly on, I have such respect for what you do. We have a shortage at our hospital as well. And thank you all for the opportunity. I see my, my hook and I tried to fit it all in.
Great. Thanks, Teresa. We appreciate you squeezing us in tonight. Lamine Swan, did I pronounce your name right?
Yes, you did.
Oh, good.
Thank you.
You're on.
My name is Lamine Swan. I am running for the 93rd House District, which is under redrawn district out of the the earlier redistricting this year. It was just now the southern end of Lexington, Fayette County. I am a designer that work in the fashion industry and also product design development. Been doing that for probably the last 15 years. Also, I'm an activist and organizer here in Lexington. Healthcare is one of my, my priorities, priorities is on the campaign, making sure people have access to affordable, quality healthcare. About 10 years ago, I was on the customer service side of setting up the Connect system when the Affordable Care Act came into effect here in the United States. Again, thank you for having me tonight. I am open to learn more and to support you all however I need to. Thank you so much.
Wonderful. We appreciate you being here. And Sherilyn Stevenson?
Hello, everyone. I am Sherilyn Stevenson and I am, I represent the 88th district. I've been elected since 2018 and I have been serving folks in southern Fayette County in redistricting. My district was drawn into northern Fayette County and also into Scott County. Let me just start by saying thank you to everyone on here, all of the nurses. You are absolutely heroes and we could not have survived the last three years without you. So thank you so much for everything that you do day in and day out. All it takes is a quick peek at the bills that I have filed in the, the last four years to see that healthcare access and affordability is a top priority of mine. I have been very proud to help support prescriptive authority for APRNs. Every single year that I have been in, I've been a co-sponsor of that bill and was absolutely proud to vote for it this year in the House. The evacuation of surgical smoke, school nurses, anything that you deem a priority, then it will become a priority of mine. And I'm proud that I have been trying to lead the way on same nurse access in the House. I have worked with KNA, Sheila Schuster before. So Julie, you and I are about to be best friends, if you know it or not.
Good.
But we absolutely need to expand the footprint.
I'm sorry.
You're on mute.
Done you. Got a tie.
That's okay.
She's ruthless. Got to watch her. Martina Jackson's next. Martina?
Good evening, everyone. Martina Jackson, thank you all for having me this evening. I'm at the public library. I'm with my 10-year-old. He's doing some Lego activities, so I felt like this was a good deal right now for us to be here together here. So I'm Martina Jackson. I'm the Democratic candidate here in the 91st district that is Estill, Powell, and eight precincts in Richmond, in Madison County. I live here in Richmond. And I have the, looking at your legislative priorities, all of those have touched me in some form or fashion, either professionally or personally. I spent some time working at the Justice Cabinet overseeing the Violence Against Women's Federal Grant, and that includes a lot of grants, projects for same, same nurses. And so I got to see that on a personal level and professional level to see the impact across Kentucky. And so that's near and dear to me. I worked there during the Bevin administration and also as a parent, seeing nurses in our schools and having worked in schools. And also I work at Eastern Kentucky University where I see students every day. I know the impact of having access to care is critical. And so as I've gone out through my district, I think it's important that we continue to build partnerships for all healthcare professionals. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thanks so much. Susan Centra?
Sorry about that. I'm in my car in between soccer games. Hi, everybody. My name is Susan Centra. I am a teacher in Madison County. I've been teaching for about 19 years and I'm the president of our Teachers Association for the county. So I've been that president through all of the COVID that has happened and stood with all of our school nurses several times, trying to make sure that they have enough support. So there's, in what you were speaking of with our legislative priorities, there is so much, so much happening there that we can empathize with from the teacher. We also are dealing with the shortage. We understand what that's like. And so I look forward to working with everyone. I also didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't say, I'm the Democratic candidate for the state senate in District 34, which is Madison County and Southern Fayette. All right. And I appreciate being here and I apologize if I'm back and forth because I'm driving. Thank you for your time.
Those of us who are parents, I think, totally understand. It's a juggling act. And last but not least, we have Ralph Alvarado.
Thanks. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Hopefully everybody can hear me good. Great. Ralph Alvarado, I'm currently serving the state senate in the 28th district that includes Fayette County, Clark, Montgomery. I've added Bath and Menifee into my district now as well. I've been serving in this role now for eight years. I'm running unopposed this year. So I'm blessed to be able to serve another four years in the district. I currently serve as a senate health and welfare chairman. Had an opportunity to get a lot of healthcare-related bills. I'm a physician by trade. I still practice medicine. If you see me glancing at my phone, I'm getting nursing home calls while I'm sitting here talking. I do a lot of long-term care. I work in skilled nursing facilities now, worked as a hospitalist, run a primary care clinic for about 15 years with a lot of that rollout of the ACA, as it did to a lot of doctors, it kind of forced a lot of physicians out of practice into more hospital loan practices. And so I was, did that for a while, then came back out. Now I'm back to being an independent practitioner and doing a lot of long-term care. Needless to say, I work with nurses every day, just about, take calls from nurses every day. They've taught me a lot during residency. I've trained a lot of nurse practitioners in my office. I feel pretty well-versed on the demands that are put on nurses. I've seen it with my own eyes. I know how much work they do and how crucial they are to the healthcare system. I often compare them to the lifeblood of the system, really. So without nurses, the whole thing doesn't operate or work. And so it's crucial for us to continue to keep nurses here, to train nurses, attract them, and make this a great.
Ralph Alvarado, I'm sorry, but your time is up. Thank you so much.
Great. Thanks so much for everyone's support for nurses. We probably all have them in our family, you know, friends, neighbors, that kind of thing. So I don't know anybody who doesn't like nurses, but we're gonna have some questions and Dr. Welch is gonna start with the first question.
Thank you, Julie. And thank you again, everyone, for introducing themselves. So our first question that's up, and we'll again go around and not playing favorites, just start at the top and go to the bottom. Our first question for our legislators is, how do you plan on supporting nurses in the 2022 legislative session? And so we'll start with Ms. Amanda Bledsoe.
I think I should have logged in later so I wasn't first in these conversations. But that being said, first off, you know, the last eight years, I have financially supported every year our same program, which is critical to Lexington's support for making sure our victims are taken care of. And as you said, having an independent person look at those victims and making sure building cases is critical. So I'm proud to have supported that the whole time. Two, I initiated an initiative last year called Accelerate Lexington, which was part of our goal to help support UK Healthcare, Baptist Health, St. Joe, and try to get more people working with BCTC to get into the CNA program so that they were, continue to grow up into the RNs and et cetera. So you don't start that pipeline, it's hard to get people to progress. So that was initiative last year that passed out of the budget committee and is working right now. So I think my past support speaks pretty highly of my current support for nurses. My dad had cancer for eight years before passing away and nurses were a critical component to making him and quite frankly, the rest of us know what was going on in his own healthcare. So I plan on just continuing that support. And I think what you're putting forward here, and I don't know all the issues as well, but the ones I'm supportive of, I think are really good and I put on doing so.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Stratton?
Well, thank you very much again. Again, I appreciate you all as well. And again, I'm still, we'll be learning most of the issues that are important to you, I'm sure, but I'm a big proponent of incentives. I like what you mentioned earlier about, you know, incentivizing the education of nurses to go into areas of Kentucky who have shortages now. So I would be, you know, continue that program, look at it and expand it if possible. So again, also, you know, I'm an educator, so I would like to see more. So again, also, you know, uh, I'm, I'm an educator, so I would like to see more uh, resources for the, the schools we have, you know, KSU, UKUFL, all schools have nursing programs. And I'll just, of course, looking at your priorities, I like to uh, to expand the nurse practitioners uh, uh, access as well. Make sure they have more authority. I, I do like that. I've always been appreciative of, of those aspects. So. Now, I like, again, I want to learn more about what you are looking for as well. So I've got some homework to do myself.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Stratton. And uh, I'm gonna call you Mr. Chad because I'm not pronouncing your last name correctly.
I'll just make this real easy. Just pretend like the U is not there. Just O.
Okay, perfect. Mr. O. You're a.
Yeah. I think the good Lord gave us two ears and one mouth so we can be quiet and listen. And I will tell you, as a, a first time getting ready to be elected official, um, I respect deeply what the nursing profession does for our, our citizens, for our Commonwealth. But I'm not well-versed as you all are in your life experiences and what you go through and what your top priorities will be for this upcoming session. I've already emailed Julie on the side over here for something else that you all talked about earlier. And I pledge to do that. I pledge to work with you and to listen to you, to what your top priorities become for the upcoming session. And whatever those top priorities are, I, I can pretty much guarantee you, I'm gonna be there. Uh, you know, a lot of people, Amanda and others, have talked about the same nurses. I had the pleasure to serve on the Bluegrass Right Crisis Center Board of Directors here in Lexington for five years. And, and got to hear, you know, from those people and those situations. And I know, um, you know, the difficulties they get in when they respond after hours to those kind of emergency situations. So anything we can do to support and incentivize and encourage more people in that space is critical for the overall healthcare of our region and our, and our Commonwealth. So I, I'll be looking to you to tell me what your priorities are. That way I can partner with you to uh, get things advanced to the coming session.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Uh, and Ms. Barton?
I feel like we're all kind of in the same boat and coming into this, um, we're just learning a little bit more about your priorities from a legislator's perspective. Um, I can assure you, just from my experience on the hospital board with our shortage that we deal with, everything from travel nurses on, that the priorities that you labeled earlier and the ones that were on the uh, information that we received in advance. Um, I, I can embrace those ideas. Um, the legislation, I would be, you know, honored to help with that. Um, to me, it's something that's very critical to the health of the Commonwealth. I think, um, much like everyone else, the last few years, you know, you may have taken some folks for granted who uh, you show up to the doctor's office of the hospital or wherever you go. Um, but the expertise, the knowledge, the responsibility, the burden and the stress that nurses and nursing has been under the last few years is just unbelievable. So um, you know, I can't say one hundred percent without question because I don't know exactly what your future holds. But in twenty-twenty-three, uh, should there be an issue, you can absolutely count on me to listen. Um, I know that I have the, the concern for what you face and I'll be there. Um, I'll, I'll be, my door will be open. So I would be honored to, to help with your priorities.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Uh, and Cheryl Stevenson?
Well, again, um, I, I, I pledge to uh, to make your priorities my priorities. I feel like I have proven that I have been a good partner um, for the nurses uh, over the last four years. And I have no intention of stopping that. I do uh, wanna keep working on the same issue. And carrying the torch ag- again for school nurses and anything else that you guys bring forward. Um, you know, I hope that we can be uh, proactive and reactive for you. Um, in, in moving forward with anything that you guys think, um, you need in your profession and uh, to help you guys keep, keep going. And hopefully, you know, we all keep our fingers crossed that the next year will be the year that we get that APR, that APRN bill over the finish line. So Senator Alvarado, we're looking at you. Just saying it passed the House this year.
All right, Ms. Jackson?
Um, just to echo what uh, folks are saying, it's, it's definitely listening to those who are doing the direct service. Um, in the first place is, is a good place to start for me. Um, I've already encountered, um, talking to nurse practitioners in my district who have talked about um, in particular, being able to help those who are dealing with opioid addiction. And um, that will definitely be a top priority for me, um, just because folks in my district and nurse practitioners are saying, we, we have an issue here and we don't have um, the tools really to do what we need to do. Um, aside that we can't do it, but there are barriers in the way. Um, so continuing to be a supporter and advocate for the policies that we need to make sure that we're serving Kentuckians the way that they need to, um, is on my top list as well as um, continuing access for nurses in our schools. Um, I know that's usually a, a front line of where kids may first encounter healthcare. Um, folks, you know, to the extent of someone, um, if they didn't have access to healthcare outside of the zero to five. And so for whatever reason that may be. And so I know nurse practitioners and nurses can be a critical component in making sure that our kiddos are taken care of.
Okay. And thank you. I appreciate that. And Mr. Swan?
As a person with a disability, I know how critical uh, nurses are to uh, overall the healthcare industry. So um, my priorities will be your priorities, your legislative priorities, I am frank for coming up, upcoming session. And we'll listen and support uh, whatever parties you need, uh, need to happen. And in the nursing industry, I know it's a struggle out there uh, for nurses in the last few years with the pandemic. So I'm fully behind you all and will boost whatever you all need legislatively.
Very good. Thank you. And Dr. Alvarado?
Yeah. So a couple of things, um, and things I'm surprised you guys don't have on your list of priorities. One, one of them is kind of the decriminalization of the practice of nursing. We're seeing that happen in other states like Tennessee where a nurse made a mistake, obviously, and then got charged with a federal, with a, with a felony in her state. That's happening in Lexington right now with a couple of cases actually where there was probably some negligence, but not necessarily criminal activity, and nurses are being charged with crimes. Um, our laws are very similar to what we saw in Tennessee. That's something I think we need to work on. I've had physicians reach out concerned about that happening to their nurses that, that they work with. And so I think we need to take a look at that. Uh, workplace violence, obviously, is a big thing too for a lot of healthcare professionals. We know now nurses get threatened. Doctors get threatened and it's getting worse in society. I think that's something we need to start focusing on as well to make sure we protect our nurses. That when they go to work, they don't have to worry uh, about their risk of something occurring. I filed bills in the past to increase pay. Um, for, we're trying to use ARPA funds. They try to allocate about eighty-one million dollars to have a boost in, in pay. I'm not sure that can come from the state government moving forward now, but we are trying to, again, pass uh, the recent kind of nursing overhaul bill for the Board of Nursing and to take away a lot of the restrictions to produce more nurses moving forward. The other big thing I always see nurses do, they're tired of documentation. They want to take care of patients uh, one-on-one. Uh, or at least if not one-on-one, to have smaller panels that can devote more time to patient care. A tort reform is something that we desperately need in this state. And the reason why you have to fill out all that paperwork is because of the threats of being sued. And this state is worse uh, than most states in the Union by far. I think we're number two in lawsuits per capita when it comes to healthcare. So those are some of the things I think we need to focus on uh, to make, let our nurses be able to practice nursing instead of spending their time putting in documentation to make sure that they don't get sued or that a hospital or employer gets sued. All those things are things I think you have to focus on in the upcoming future.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Um, and Ms. Centra?
Yep. Hi, thank you. I think we're at the point in the discussion board where, you know, back in the day when you say, I agree. Um, all of, everything that everyone has said is absolutely something that um, I would agree with. I think that for me, when you all were speaking about your legislative priorities, uh, the ones that touch, touch home to me are understanding and emphasizing with that shortage. Um, I think it was something like sixteen thousand uh, nurses are needed, are going to be needed next year. And so working on programs to incentivize, incentivize nurses in the, to go into the practice and working on making sure that they want to stay there. Um, that means, again, like workplace protections and safety and mental health of nurses. I think that's important too, because I know that it's a lot that you all deal with. Um, also clearly requiring um, nurses in every school building. I know there are several in my district that have to share buildings and we pop around back and forth and some days there's not a nurse. And so that's hurtful for our students and makes the job of nursing in school systems much harder. So um, anything I can do, I'm always opening to listen, listening and learning. Um, but I, I am excited to, to learn more about the issues that you all face and absolutely will support you in those. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much. And we have, um, Mr. Weston has joined us. So Mr. Weston, um, the question and that was posed is how do you plan on supporting um, nurses um, in uh, twenty-twenty-three?
Hi there.
Brittany, Dr. Welch, you forgot to tell him he only has a minute and a half and I have the hook.
I apologize. So Ms. Delano will cut you off after a minute and a half to, to provide your stage.
If everybody can hear me, all right. Uh, all the other answers that were given thus far have been pretty, pretty dead on in terms of just being willing to commit to support. Uh, the one thing that I wanted to talk about is my relationship with BCTC. And out here in Winchester, we have a new program that we're really proud of. And it's in-house and it's up and running. And we're gonna be helping get more nurses out in the field. Uh, I think that I would like to call out support for those, the extension of a family's frontline of protection, and that is those teachers um, that, that link with the, the operations that are available um, from school nurses. And so anything that we can do to get more of them out in the field. Uh, this right here, in my opinion, is the same conversation that we're having about teacher shortages. I'm a teacher and that's the language that I speak. And so I want to talk about getting more resources for our families out in the field. And I think that the same thing is true of everything we're talking about tonight.
Okay. Thank you so much. All right. I'm gonna turn it back over to Julie and she's gonna ask up our, our next question.
Thank you, Dr. Welch. Um, and many of you have touched somewhat on this, and that is the, the shortage that we have in this state. And so acknowledging that there is a shortage, how is that a priority? What, where is that on your priority scale? And how would you propose dealing with it in the next session? And let's go in reverse order, so poor Amanda doesn't get penalized for being early. Thomas Adams, do you go by Tom or Thomas? Because my oldest son is Thomas and I'm adamant that he stay Thomas. So I want to be respectful to your mother.
I will be, uh, I, I go by whatever you want to call me, as long as it's with respect. But I'll, I'll be, I'll be Tommy. Uh, I'll be Thomas. I'll be Tom. Uh, but one more time though, just since I'm going first, let's, let's get the question one more time.
The question is, we've talked about the shortage of nurses and where is that in your priorities? And how would you address that in the next session?
Oh, it's a, it's a good one. So, so um, first, I have to get to the next session. Uh, that, that is, that is my priority. And so, and, and, and uh, and in, in order, in order for me to do that, I'm gonna need the support from folks like you guys. But, but I do want to say that every time we have a conversation about healthcare, we need to talk about making it less difficult for the average person to encounter a healthcare situation. If a, anytime someone tries to seek out healthcare, it's harder than it needs to be. We're doing something wrong. And so when there aren't enough resources, and that's part of the conversation, then people are going to be less likely to seek healthcare. And then down the line, we're going to be seeing worse outcomes. Uh, and, and not that far down the line because we're seeing it every day. And so what, what I think that I'm seeing at the state level from currently an outsider's perspective, is that we need to have these conversations that include this in the conversation every time. Right? We need to include this as an ingredient every time we are discussing healthcare. And, and so whether we want to look at it as a workforce solution, or we want to look at it as an integrated approach to solving education, as I mentioned just recently, we need to include it every time. And so we, we like to try to piece things apart. And as a legislator, I think we're going to need to include this in the conversation. And that's all I'm going to say for now, but I might have more to say later.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. And Dr. Alvarado?
I think the same things I mentioned earlier. I mean, we have to, anything that's gonna make it uh, bring the joy back into the practice of nursing for nurses, you have to remember what people got into this for to begin with. So all healthcare, anybody who's a healthcare provider does it uh, with a certain amount of heart for the profession. Uh, once you get into it, it's a sacrifice. You become a slave to that profession to some degree and taking care of others. And it just becomes part of who you are. Uh, I think a lot of nurses, a lot of docs, a lot of medical folks are losing that, that passion, that love after what we've gone through for the last couple of years. And frankly, government and insurance companies, um, and sometimes employers are making it harder uh, to have that joy. So anything we can do to re-instill that joy is what we need to do. Some of the things I mentioned earlier uh, in terms of protecting folks in their environment, trying to reduce paperwork, uh, trying to make it, you know, not have to worry about those things. I think, again, tort reform, I think is a crucial issue. Uh, we've tried to address, um, you know, training, scholarship programs for nurses, trying to attract nurses into some of our rural communities. Uh, I know we've heard the statistics about some of the parts of the map. We've seen an increase in some of the nurses in some of those fields, and we still haven't seen a lot of that distributed into some of our rural areas. So anything we can do to attract healthcare providers of any type to, to practice in rural communities, I think is of, as of, of use. And then I think, again, we've kind of revamped our board. We needed new blood. We'd had people serving on the Board of Nursing for over thirty years. Uh, we kind of produced something that would help turn that over, bring new people in, uh, racial representation, regional representation from around the state, political representation. To get all voices when it comes into developing new programs for, for nurses as far as attracting nurses, training nurses, et cetera. So anything we can do uh, in that regard. We also need to incentivize nurses that have been experienced, to be able to come in and teach our younger nurses and mentor those younger nurses. And I think that's a really good idea. I know we heard some testimony from KNA at our last Health and Welfare meeting. We need to look into that as well.
Wonderful. Thanks. Susan Centra?
I'm, I think that the key here is the incentive, incentivizing folks into this profession. Um, and I think that that comes in with uh, scholarship opportunities, increased scholarship opportunities, uh, increased loan forgiveness programs um, for working, potentially working in Kentucky for X number of years, um, for even possibly working in high-needs areas. Uh, but looking at how are we attracting folks into the business, also, or into the industry, and also how are we paying them? Um, so we have to look at the pay that these, these people are getting, look at the pay, or look at their workplace uh, experience. I know so many nurses are overworked consistently, um, and that causes them to want to burn out. Um, there's a huge burnout issue with that. So if we can figure out how to, if we can get more people in, figure out how to protect them while they're in the workplace. Um, and then providing them with the, I mentioned before, mental health access. Um, I think we have to talk about and, and de-stigmatize what that means so that people are taking care of themselves. We, they can't take care of anyone else if we're not taking care of ourselves. So uh, those would be some of the big issues, but definitely working on uh, incentivized packages for nurses.
Wonderful. Thanks so much. Martina Jackson, you're next.
Um, I would agree in terms of thinking about, um, I, I work at Eastern Kentucky University and I do a lot of retention and leadership uh, development students there. And so I, I think immediately of the students who come into my center, um, who are nursing students and um, they've got a heavy, you know, workload already within uh, their major. And so what are we doing to make sure that uh, we're retaining them? Um, I'm part of that at the school. Um, but also making sure that once they get out, that they have a place that um, they want to work in. And so um, as others may have said to the incentivizing, what are we looking at for loan forgiveness? Um, what are we looking at to incentivize areas, especially rural areas? Because my district is, uh, has a significant role um, area that we need those resources. We need those people in our area. Um, and with, you know, a university like EKU, that would be a great opportunity for us to expand in that area. So I'm always looking to support um, ways to help encourage people to stay long-term in this profession. Um, but also continue to um, support them in terms of mental health. We know first responders need that mental health um, support. And what else um, can we do to help those such as nurses uh, to continue to get that support? Um, I also think about uh, you know, workplace safety. Um, I know that, you know, with nurses, that's gonna be a, a constant uh, battle, especially with COVID. And um, thinking about also their physical safety and having that environment is going to be important to have support there.
Thank you. There you go. You're hooked. Sherilyn Stevenson?
Well, I think that uh, many of us are, are going to, again, rep-
Well, I think that many of us are going to, again, repeating the others here. But we know that there was a bill that the governor signed to try to expand enrollment in nursing schools. And there was a loan forgiveness bill this year. And so we need to see how those are working and see how we can expand those. And obviously trying to work with our public universities to be able to expand their programs so that, that we are allowing larger class sizes without compromising the quality of education that, that our nurses are receiving. I think that that's, that's really important. Again, those incentives to, to go into the profession to start with, talking about that loan forgiveness, you know, and, and working on that in ways that that we can get them into the field faster, but also get them into the field where, where the, the largest needs are. When we're looking at the state of Kentucky and where, where we have deserts that we, we need more nurses. I know, you know, Louisville and Lexington both are highly populated, but yet we have shortages here as well. So, and in looking at that, looking at that burnout rate, I think that we need to do a lot of listening to you guys and listening to your membership to hear what makes nurses feel more supported. And, and I know in any industry, most of the time, more money and time off is what any employee wants. And so I'm guessing that that's probably not going to be a lot different when we're talking about nurses. And but just listening to what those needs are and then trying to find creative solutions for how we fix that while maintaining their love of nursing and also being sure that they
And you got hooked. Lamine Swan?
Yes, one thing is education, exposure to the nursing field, even high school. If I'm correct, there's a high school in Lexington that has somewhat of a study program in the medical field. So, you know, recruit recruitment has a transition into college, make sure funding is there while they get into training. And then even after they graduate, you know, some kind of forgiveness program like for public employees for the nursing field. That will take one kind of restraint off and then just providing resources there for them, you know, or going in, in the career, make sure they're supported.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Hang on, I've got something in front of my screen. Teresa?
You're on.
It sounds like a lot of things have already been said, but I too recognize the, the need and the issue with the shortage. Something we compete with here in Franklin County. And I realize I'll represent, you know, seven counties, but we do have a nursing school at Kentucky State University. And our hospital struggles so much because we have about a thirty percent, thirty to forty percent supporting when you're asking and looking at the statistics shortage. We've gone to travel nurses and it's very, very difficult. The pay is, it's just a disparity between the pay of travel nurses and what your full-time staff earns. But I would, I like the idea of starting earlier with the high school students and trying to, to guide them into, you know, the profession. Helping, helping to get a CNA at a younger age, that's even allowed. I don't know all the details, so I apologize if I'm speaking out here. But I just think there are things that we can do to continue to, to guide folks into going in that direction. You know, the incentives, the loan forgiveness that you've mentioned is already on the books. You know, when I heard about student loan forgiveness, I thought, good Lord, what are they doing? Why don't we focus on folks who have given their lives the last few years? Give them year for year, you know, some sort of incentive or at least a loan forgiveness of their student loan. But the scholarship opportunities, I would embrace all that, not only because we have the university here, it's the right thing to do, but serving on the Board of trustees here at the Frankfurt Regional Medical Center. It just makes the biggest difference when you have quality nursing staff. And, you know, of course, we don't want, we want to make sure that we don't take a chance on you know, diminishing the quality of the education as well. You just don't want to throw them into the industry. But anyway, I think everyone's pretty much said everything, but yeah, these are all great ideas. We need to embrace those. Thank you.
Great. Thanks. And Chad?
So I'm gonna go a little different route. So I'm not repetitive because I do agree with a whole lot of what already has been said. So I'm going to take it back to a global perspective. You know, this comes down to a quality of life issue. And this is not just a Lexington, Central Kentucky, Kentucky problem. This is a global problem. And we have to compete and recruit for nursing talent on a global scale. And the way we're going to do that is to make Kentucky the version of itself, the best version of itself that is attractive to these people because they want to have a high quality of life if we're recruiting nurses from Arizona or from other places. So on top of the things we're already doing at our tuition forgiveness and loan programs, which are fantastic, we got to make Kentucky the version of itself that is attractive for families to move here. They want to come live in Lexington or other parts in Kentucky. And to do that, we have to have a strong public school system. And so the first thing we can do is stop attacking our public school employees and teachers and, you know, and provide them the resources and funding they need to educate those students who can go into the nursing field. And so those families who come here have a strong public school system that their kids can go and attend. It's a part of the fabric of our Commonwealth. And if we want a strong, attractive state for people to live and come and to move here, we need a strong public school system. We need to keep a strong public school system like we have today and not go down the route of charter schools, which will destroy our public school system. And then number two, we need to get back to the state level funding that we had for our state universities twenty years ago. We can't increase the amount of students that are going through these programs if we continue to cut the funding that we give to our state public universities. We must provide them additional funds.
I'm sorry, Chad. Your time is up. Thank you.
Garrett Stratton is next.
Again, I agree with everything's been said here so far. Just add a little bit to that. Of course, I, again, I teach at Kentucky State and know the nursing faculty here very well and know what they have to deal with. And several things I do like, you know, their partnership with the Frankfurt Medical Center. It's great. And I, you know, every public school like ours, I'm sure partners, when you do more of that, I love the partnering that we do with that hospital and we do it with other hospitals as well as we should. I do like, of course, internships. I, I try to get all of our students here at KSU in school business to do internships. Also work with the high and small school high schools here on financial literacy. And I know that there's a lot of job shadowing going on. So I'd like to see that improved or increased as well. I think that would be a good way to get more people into any profession, but especially nursing, if you do some, allow job shadowing with the nurses that are out here doing a wonderful job and, and show young, you know, high school students, maybe juniors, I guess, possible, sophomores maybe even as well. You know, what do they do on a daily basis and how rewarding it would be to be a nurse? So that could be, you know, job shadowing is, I think, a good way to increase that, that knowledge and the desire, the passion to be in whatever field you're trying to push, of course. And again, like started to say, make the, the field is, you know, less stressful than what it's been. So again, and a lot of this has already been said, but I would, you know, again, obviously support more money for public universities. I would like to, I know our program is growing here at KSU and we definitely need some more resources here, both public and private. So there's a lot of things I would, again, I just do do more homework on what you guys want. I like all the proposals you have so far. And I'm very much into, to helping work with you. Thank you.
I appreciate that. And finally, last, and she's so probably happy about it, Amanda Bledsoe.
Well, everyone, things been said. So at this point, I guess I would just say what I've done already, which is, you know, in two thousand and fifteen, we were initiated a workforce development grant program. And part of that came about because we were looking at fifty-two percent of Lexington's workforce, workforce comes from outside Fayette County. So it's critical for our success that our partners come in. And one of the five, a top industries for, for Lexington is, is healthcare. And so one of the big impediments to getting people into that skilled trade kind of pipeline, if you will, is actually having those resources. If you don't have two thousand dollars to go into the CNA training, you're not going to have a certification. So I initiated the workforce, workforce development grant program, which provided that grant scholarship opportunity. And we partnered with a, with a local training program so that people actually could get the certification first and not have that debt. And then we also worked with UK and Baptist Health and St. Joe to provide all the equipment that nurses would need or it's a CNA's would need. So they will walk out essentially debt-free and having the resources that they, they have. I see the same program at the state level in terms of universities. How can we better equip people to go into the industry to have the, the scholarships they need, the training they need, and the resources? So they leave and enter the workforce. And I'd be very interested in continuing that conversation, supporting it because it's critical. People want to stay here and thrive here. They have to have, it has to be financially viable to do so. And I'm proud of what we've done. Lexington has been very successful and I see it being a kind of a model for helping others in that area.
I appreciate your input and sharing that with us. I'm going to pitch it back to Dr. Welch to ask the next question.
Actually, I'm going to turn it over to Delano. We have some questions, a little Q and A section.
Thank you, Brittany. We had was in Kentucky for children living in poverty. And next, what have you or what will you do to support school nurses and schools in general to assist in the reduction of these disparities? Especially as they relate to COVID nineteen and its documented, documented adverse impact on these families and the provision of additional much-needed services for children in schools. And Dr. Welch, I'm going to let you do the round robin because you do that so well.
And Amanda, sorry, you're going to be up first this time.
That's okay. I would, you know, I'm a mom. I have a ninth grader and a sixth grader who have benefited from having a nurse on property, certainly our schools. And I think it's critical, you know, nurses see things that others don't. And so having a trained nurse who can maybe see an individual who comes in more often, may have other issues going on that the layperson would not identify and are able to ask follow-up questions and do some wraparound health, maybe social services get involved. Other things are identified that may be at home that need some help or even some, you know, my, my son has a five oh four, so I'm very familiar with how critical sometimes in mental health, the, the health of a child and the success of the child works together. So I'm very much in support of having nurses in, in all of our schools and that can provide that early intervention and provide some, at least some next steps, maybe to interview or a family may not have those resources at home. And I think that's critical for overall health and for the individual and for the family.
Thank you. Mr. Stratton?
Yes, I would be again in support of that. And I like to expand on that, though, you know, the nurse is there for anything that could maybe happen medically, but also be preventive care. As I mentioned before, you know, in economics and finance, if you can stop the problem before it starts, you're going to save a lot of money. So I would like to see that nurse in every school be there for, again, for the medical care, but also be as a teaching for as prevention of, of, you know, things happening in the future, you know, how you eat, how you take care of yourself. So again, be that, you know, I guess mentor to be a healthy in the future. So I mean, maybe take care of some of those issues before they even start. So yes, I would be definitely in favor of that.
Thank you so much. Mr. All?
Yeah, I, I think Delano, you broke up during a part of this. I think this question is about the significant disparities for Kentucky children living in poverty and minorities and Oh, all right.
And also in the schools and how, how you would support, supporting the schools.
Yeah. Well, I talked a little bit about the schools in the last answer, you know, I think public schools in general, if we don't have strong public schools, we're not going to have a strong Commonwealth, period, end of story. So, but specifically for children who are living in poverty, what we have to do is we have to bolster our family resource centers. Most of our schools have these friskies or family resource use centers in those schools. They are right there on the front lines every day with these students and they know the needs of these kids. And that's who we have, we have to, you know, retain and recruit and have good people in those roles and every one of these schools. But those, I, I just went the other day to drop off a box of donations that somebody had given to take me over. And she was running between three schools. You know, these people have to bounce around between all these schools because we're not adequately funding that type of resource. So if we really want to make a difference in the lives of these kids who are living in poverty on a day-to-day basis, we need to fully fund friskies. Second, we should have not ended the, the declaration of the emergency pandemic before it was over. We got rid of over fifty million dollars of SNAP funding into our state for no reason at all, cutting these kids off from additional resources and needs right there in the school system. So if we want to talk about taking care of the least among us, that's what we have to do is we have to care and think about how we're going to impact the least among us every time we pass a piece of legislation.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Ms. Stevenson?
Well, we have, we have put so much on our schools. We have asked them to do anything and everything on top of educating our children. And they have become the link for wraparound services. And so whether we're talking about the friskies, if we're talking about trying to get school nurses in, if we're trying to talk about adding mental health counselors on top of guidance counselors, those things, including the safety of our children while they are there, cost money. And I think that there is not a better investment that we can make in our state, in our future than investing in our public schools. They absolutely have become a, a first line of defense for our kids. And I think having a robust wraparound service right there in the school with friskies and nurses and mental health counselors and all of those things. And, you know, they are going to be critical in the roles of assessment, intervention and monitoring these kids. You know, when kids come to school hungry or they come to school sick or they come to school having had to sleep on the floor because they don't have a bed that is theirs. And, you know, those are barriers to learning and providing those wraparound services are the best defense that we have against those things. They, having all of those extra things funded at the school level will help us be sure that we're, we're addressing psychosocial issues such as drug abuse, sexual abuse, violence within the family, family dysfunction, poverty, homelessness, teen pregnancy, anything that will affect the child's ability to learn. So funding, funding.
Thank you. Mr. Swan?
Ah, yes. Again, what everybody said, we beyond, you know, making sure is public schools are fully funded, we got to make sure the wraparound services are fully funded also. And then also access to those wraparound services even beyond school hours. We got to make sure those are able in the neighborhood because those wraparound services could be the only point of contact for that student or his, his or her family in that community.
Thank you. Ms. Centra? That's okay. We'll come back. Mr. Adams?
All right. So I, I like this all. And actually, I was very excited to hear some of the things that I wanted to say. Thanks for dealing with my camera issues earlier. I was having problems and now, now I'm here. But the family resource centers, I believe, you can check me if I'm wrong on this, I think that those are only, to speak to Chad's point, are only at the schools where there are more than twenty percent of students that, that receive funding for school lunch assistance. And so, and then we've already pooh-poohed the extra funding that we could have gotten at the state level. And so we've ruined that. But but what we need to do is take a look at how we can expand on those existing operations, right? So what we do is we take the, the existing rules and expand it to maybe a lower threshold so that we can provide those services to more people and do what Lamine said by expanding them to more school hours or looking at other community organizations that already have pilot programs at, at outreach and then use those as models to build these care on, these care, these care sources on. And I do have to say one more time, I want to, I want to shout out to what BCTC here in Winchester is doing by, by bringing healthcare into these communities that are outside of the larger city areas. We have thirty students in a nursing program right now, and it is through, just like we were talking, like we were hearing about at Kentucky State by working with Frankfurt Hospital. We're working with Clark Regional out here. And, and I want to see more people do that in other slightly more remote areas. We talk about shortages of other healthcare workers, but these need to all be.
I'm sorry, Mr. Weston, but you're out of time. Brittany, you're on mute.
Famous words from twenty twenty and beyond. Ms. Centra, we're going back to you.
Okay, thanks. Sorry about that. I had to hit a button and it didn't, it messed up. But
Okay, thanks. Sorry about that. I had a hit a button and it didn't, it messed up, but. Everything you all have said is absolutely true. I will say um, several years ago in my district, we had a program in one of our schools. And I think it was a grant, I can't remember, I can't, I can't even remember what the name of it was. But we had a clinic in the school. Um, that was open even after school hours, but students, you know, with. The appropriate signed forms could go to this clinic. Um, during the school, they could go after. I think it was open until six. It was even open to families. Um, of students. So that was an opportunity that our school was able to provide to the community and when we lost the funding for that. Um, it was definitely an adjustment back to it, back to what we're doing now, which is um, having, you know, we, I I live. I teach in a high school with twenty-three hundred students, so we do have a full-time nurse and one that is there um, additionally to help. But in several of our smaller schools, we don't have that. And I can't say enough how much, how many times. Um, I've sent students down to the nurse for, you know, a headache medicine or a stomach issue, something like that. That could, if there's not a stu-, if there's not a nurse in the building, then those kids are gonna go home. And these are the kids who. Need to be in school the most. Um, these are the ones that we're talking about have not having access to this type of, sometimes this type of medicine at home. And they can get it at school, stay in school. So I, everything that we've talked about with funding, that's absolutely a necessity. Funding our our nurses in our schools, sorry, funding the nurses in the schools and making that a priority has to be where we start.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Ms. Barton.
Thank you. Um, I think a lot of things have already been said, you know, uh, looking at the friskies, that's something important here in Franklin County schools. I'm most familiar with. Um, you know, when I was growing up, nurses were in our schools. We had, um, yeah, I I look at from the justice side, when I was in the Justice for Exavity Cabinet. We provide more for those who are incarcerated than we do for kids. They have more resources and it's because it's required. Why are we not requiring this for those children who need it the most? Um, you know, we had strong counselors, strong nurses, and I'm older probably than most of you guys. So when, you know, back in the late sixties, early seventies, we had, you know, our schools had folks that. Could be that safety net for us. Uh, I've worked a lot with friskies here in Franklin County on everything from. I was a teen parent, so I've talked with a lot of them about issues that I'm allowed to talk about without, you know, without crossing the line. We need a lot of that in our schools and I just feel like so much is being left on the table. That we could provide those resources. It's just a matter of shifting our priorities. Um, but again, I don't think there's much more that I could say that hasn't already been said, but um, we, you know, we do need to do more.
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Alvarado.
Yeah, thanks. The um, so, you know, I want to remind everybody, we have a shortage of nurses period across the state. We, we don't have enough nurses to s- to staff our hospitals. Not enough to staff our nursing homes right now. A lot of our clinics, um, a lot of these facilities are running at shorter capacity. Because they don't have enough nurses to staff the beds that they have. So we're running short. I mean, it sounds good and I, it, you know, people that are non-medical often talk about. Oh yeah, we gotta just do this or do that, like we're popping gum out of a gumball machine. These are all human beings, all people. It takes a long time to train. To get them where they need to be. Um, so it sounds good. In the meantime, while we're waiting to build up our nursing force, to be able to accommodate all these shortages across the the. Entire spectrum, we have something called telehealth that we've done a very good job of in the last few years to use. I've encouraged a lot of our schools who may not be able to attract. Nurse, not have some of these willing to come out and do that, to use telehealth services to provide care, counseling, lots of things for people pretty quickly. And be able to do that from one central location as we build up our workforce to be able to accommodate this. So I think we need to be able to use ideas like that. Everybody loves friskies. They always get funded well. That's one department. It's bipartisan support and no one ever, I think, you're always gonna see a lot of support for it. Because we know the the good work they do. Uh, we talk about poverty. Um, you have to get to the underlying root of poverty, really. Uh, education obviously is very important, uh, but also have opportunities in the state. We need to be able to have a state that's successful with lots of jobs, high paying. That will attract people to come here and help peo- move people up. We also talk about fiscal cliffs when it comes to benefits from the state. A lot of people are unwilling to move into those higher levels or higher paying jobs because they have a lot of benefits from the state. We're talking about getting rid of that fiscal cliff and being kind of an off-ramp, so people will slowly transition into higher paying jobs. Be able to move off the roles, be able to get them into better situations that way as well. All those things are being worked on right now. Um, lots of things that we're continually thinking about. Mental health, also, we've done a lot for our schools to improve mental health capacity. To report problems and concerns, provide support for kids there. So all those things need to continue to be done. Um, we have to do a lot of the underlying problems. Uh, to get poverty moved out of the way.
Okay, thank you. Um, it looks like we have time for one more question and we're gonna give each individual about a minute on this last question.
Oh, uh, Martina did not get a chance to answer.
Oh, I'm so sorry, Martina, I missed you. Uh, Ms. Jackson.
Thank you. Um, just from what I'm hearing from folks say, I think a lot about access points for. Um, black and brown populations in which folks need to get healthcare. Um, and looking at the disparities, I work in diversity, equity, inclusion work, and so I'm often thinking about what are the barriers. In place that folks are not being able to access healthcare, um, let alone, you know, um, the the nursing. Or having nurses in schools uh, when we have a shortage. So um, I'm just thinking about um, what Senator Alvarado said. Thinking about telehealth, especially in rural areas, we need investment in broadband. Um, it's gonna be really hard to get access to that when my cell service is dropping in hollers. It's just, that's, that's a reality that happens when I'm out in Powell and Estill County, just depending what I'm doing, if I'm on the trails, that happens. Um, also thinking about um, our public health departments and um, is is that a, that's a crucial point. For uh, nursing and access to uh, for folks, having access to nurses. Um, but also again, to families and young children, um, in particular in areas that may have larger populations for. Our Latinx and um, black populations. So again, I'm, I'm constantly thinking about what are access points. Um, who is there that can do those services and of course, supporting nurses in those capacity. Um, and whatever that looks like will be a a priority for me. She almost got me.
I almost got you.
Okay, thank you so much. And one of the questions that came from our attendees, um, and again, we'll give everybody. Uh, one minute to answer this and we'll just go around is, uh, it's kind of a two-part question, one or two-part question. Uh, what is your opinion on medical marijuana? Um, and if so, um, if you're, uh, do you believe as. You would support NP prescribing authority for medical marijuana? And so I believe Julie will do the round robin on this one. And so Julie, you wanna take it away?
Sure. Well, I'm gonna mix it up a little. Let's start with Ms. Centra.
Okay, I gotta switch screens to click the mute button, sorry. Um. Absolutely support medical marijuana, absolutely would support nurse practitioners being able to uh, prescribe it. I don't know if there's much else to say other than the fact that Kentucky is ready for medical marijuana. We've been ready for a long time. And we, it's time that we pass that. And that continues to die in the Senate, and so let's change that. Let's change that and and turn this into something that's beneficial for everybody.
Alright.
Thank you.
Mean, I I'm sorry, did I interrupt you, Susan? Okay, um, Lamine.
One hundred percent support medical marijuana and nurse practitioners prescribing it, hundred percent.
Well, that took less than a minute. Thank you.
Oh yeah, nine, nine seconds. That was awesome.
I know, we're setting records now. Thomas Adams.
Uh, there's, there's a, we could just all say, um, I would like to single out the folks that maybe don't, let them have a chance to speak. I'm also in in favor. And I, and I, but I feel like the, the conversation can even go be beyond that as well. Uh, we're here having a medical conversation. But let's just make sure that other people are involved in expanding that conversation too. And uh, and it gets messy when we talk about things like hemp. And we need to always include um, the emphasis of forwarding that part of the conversation as well, but I'll stop.
Alright, Sherilyn Stevenson.
Yes and yes, I am uh, proud. I have co-sponsored uh, HB thirty-six all of my years. Uh, I actually even filed my own bill this year after I feel that the efforts to get the bill through the Senate um, have compromised the bill. Um, over and over and over. Uh, and yes, I would support nurse practitioners prescribing.
Martina, have I called on you yet? Okay, your turn.
Um, I believe in uh, following the data and looking what the data says and and finding our solutions and informing our policy. And from the models that we've seen from various states that um, it can and does work. Um, and we should support it. And I support our nurses being able to uh, be able to prescribe it as well.
Alright, Teresa Barton. Yes, medical cannabis and yes, prescription authority. Great. Dr. Alvarado.
I I can't answer all this in one minute. Uh, I'm gonna try my best. Uh, I I work in substance use. So I'm, I'm the medical director for Isaiah House, treat a lot of people with substance use disorder. I go to a lot of NCSL meetings nationwide, talking to legislators from other states where this stuff has been legalized, people on both sides of the aisle. People who are in this space are against, they, they think medical marijuana, however we wanna call it, legalization is not good for people to have this space. We're seeing our youth increase, the amount of use that's out there, increase in COPD, heart disease, people that have done it. Mental illness in our youth. If you're under the age of twenty-five and you start this stuff, the amount of schizophrenics come out of this from mental illness is markedly higher. I've been asking for the studies that people think that are out there. I have access to all those studies. I review those things. I have yet to find the study that says this is something that's safe to use in a raw marijuana form, way too many variables. If you want to decriminalize marijuana and let people use it however they want to, great, that's a different situation. But to call it a medicine implies safety. And there is not, is not a safe product. Lots of things out there, cocaine has medicinal purposes. We don't call it medical cocaine. We extract the compounds. Same thing. I appreciate it, but it's, it's a bad idea. I'm against it.
Alright, Amanda.
Can I cede my time to to Ralston's wasn't finished? Um, I'm kidding. I I very much um, care about healthcare and there's no question that in some of the research, you've seen that. It reduces some of the seizures and those things and it's no question that that's there. I share some of the concerns about how it's administered and how it's done. I'm just from a policy standpoint. And so I would be, I'm, I'm, I'm on the fence. I'm supportive of the issue. But I would like to do a lot more research on what it actually looks like for us in in the state. And I wanna see specific legislation about how it's administered before I actually go on the record. Saying if I'm for or against.
And would you, if it were to pass and you were comfortable with voting for medical marijuana. How would you, would you support nurse practitioners being able to also prescribe it as they prescribe medications now?
If it did, I think that would make sense, just because if it falls in the same jurisdiction they already have for med- medical, and then for drugs, that would make sense to me.
Okay, great. And Gary Stratton.
Uh, I know there's more research going on UK now that's been started, so looking forward to seeing what comes out of that. I, I am for. Uh, legalizing medical marijuana in a, you know, very restrictive way and just like any other drug and prescribed and so forth. And and again, uh, nurse practitioners I know can subscribe already, prescribe uh, medicines. So I would be, if it turns out to be a a. Very beneficial, I would be very much in favor of them prescribing that.
And Chad.
Yes, yes.
Did I miss anybody?
Give me a chance to to hook you.
Yes.
Delinor, do you wanna wrap up?
I do. Thank you, Julie. I wanna thank. All of you all for joining us tonight. This has been um, very informative. Um, and we, we really appreciate you taking the time to talk with the nurses. I would just like to say that um, KNA represents eighty-nine thousand voting nurses. We represent nurses no matter where they work or what they do, or even if they work, we still represent. So we appreciate you. Wanting to hear about our priorities. Also, I'd like to um, remind the people who are have joined us, who are not the panelists. That we have in business meeting on October the twenty-seventh, we have our conference in November the third and fourth. And um, our Leadership Legislative Academy. And the reason I wanna mention that is, is that some of you, when you win. Will maybe ask to support and be mentors for nurses uh, in Frankfurt. And so we hope that you will consider that if you get that opportunity. Donna, did you wanna close us out?
Yes, I would be happy to. And to those uh, nurse attendees. Please do think about this Leadership and Legislative Academy. It, uh, if you are on this call, you probably have interest. In legislative issues and advocacy. And that would be a wonderful opportunity for you to learn more. You can find more information about that on our website, kentucky-dash-nurses.org. Um, so thank you all so much. This has been lovely getting to know you guys a little bit and hear your, um, your thoughts on things. We very much appreciate your support and um, we look forward to working with you guys in the future. So thank you very much. And thanks for everyone for attending. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night. Bye-bye.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, goodnight.